We're going to call the meeting over tonight. We've got a lot of special guests. We want to welcome all our guests. Appreciate you being here tonight. And we're going to have a pledge allegiance to Ms. Francis, not least in that. And after that, Mr. Red House will give our indications.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for the city and for its leaders. We pray that you bless the leaders tonight and that our conversation would be good in your eyes. We pray that you would bless us and help us to make good decisions for the future of the city. Please, as a God, forgive us for our sins in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you. Scott knows. First time on agenda tonight is a recommendation to approve the minutes for last meeting on 3/21/16. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion.
On the favor say aye. Number two is a recommendation to approve the council table bills for March 16. Is there a motion to approve those bills?
I'll second.
On the favor say aye. Before we get into our rest of our agenda, we've got a lot of special basketball players we want to recognize tonight. Scotty asked me a couple of weeks ago, I think it was starting the AA week, so we put it until tonight. So Scotty, if you would, please, if you want to talk about these young men and recognize them, what do you want to do?
I'll call him. He comes up. Okay. First of all, Mayor and Council, thanks for having these boys. They've worked hard all year. Not only is it good to recognize them for the job and accomplishments they've made, but they're getting to the age where coming to a council meeting is good for them to see how the city business runs too. So thank y'all very much for having them. This is 12 under All-Stars, which won district at Winfield this year. They defeated Sheffield, Musso Shovels, and Rustable. Then they went to the state tournament and defeated Homewood before getting beat by, excuse me, getting beat by Gaskin. So they won four games out of five that they played and went to the state tournament. I think it was a good experience for them because there's a few kids that were old enough to play junior high this year, and they'll definitely, they'll be playing junior high next year, and the rest of the kids will be moving up to junior high. So, you know, their, kind of their rec center days and travel ball days are over, and they'll be playing for the school from here on out. So they've done a real good job. It was a long season. We started probably at the end of, Dave, was it the end of October? So we're right in there practicing. We played November, December at the rec. And then travel ball season started, I mean, it was like January the 2nd, I think, January 3rd. So they played January, February, and end of March. So they had a good, long season and done a really good job. But I had to get them all written down here so I wouldn't forget who I've got here. When I call you up, just come up before my line right here.
Sound like a coach, the other guy. It sound like a coach.
Jacob Scott. Joseph Baycock. Ben Moore. Trent Irving. Isaiah Peru. Carter Humphries. I think Carter's here. Peyton Sanderson. Drew Franks. Gabe Durham. I think Gabe's here. Audi Crane is not here. Von Derricks Gardner. Jacob Rushing. John Robert Page. And I want to say something about Davey. Davey Sanderson, Davey was the head coach. He coached the travel ball team to an undefeated season. They went to the finals of the travel ball tournament. This was before we started district and everything. And this is Davey's first year to coach basketball.
How many years been at high school?
Two years out of high school. And he done a really good job with kids and loved it and put a lot into it. So give these kids a hand, and Davey's going to.
Thank y'all.
Thanks for having us.
Good job. Good job, Davey.
You all up for stage home? I know something, Scotty said they may have a, something's got a ball game.
We're all about ball.
Thank y'all.
As we move forward, number three is a recommendation to retain, we use the maintenance to rank American account. This is a credit card. Due to them no longer being able to sit and have an add any next annual to their account. We can't make any changes to account, can't do anything without, because you have to have certain people that they only talk to. What do we send them a letter explaining that we're a little overworked here? That wasn't good enough. They need some ten to minutes. So they can have changes to that account, that credit card. If you have any questions you have about anything, you need to inform the people that you talk to and read this just for a moment. But it's got to be done. It's got to be in the minutes of the sitting to them. Is that correct? Yes. So would there be a recommendation to do that?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? On the favor say aye. Number four is a recommendation to purchase. We've had this for a year for towns that are out here.
2015 Yonah Hall back. It's been really on loan to us from Yonah Hall.
Yeah, they had a, what they, yeah, it's a first responder program for law enforcement. Started back. April or May of last year. And then it ended come, time for it end.
Right.
Right now. So we've got to do something with it, give it back to them.
Thomas, can you tell us what it's been all the years?
We use it for all the ball games, all the festivals. Just, we use it a couple, a couple of searches this year. We took it with us. Everything turned out all right. We didn't have to use it with, we use it a lot downtown when we're moving to stages and stuff. It comes in real handy.
We ready to do Saturday? We used it Saturday, open player.
Yeah, we use it at the playground with our, all of us do.
I mean, it's something that they use quite a bit. I think it's a good piece of work to have. My recommendation to people is to purchase it.
Yeah, and that's, that's quite a discount from what a new one would cost also.
Let me ask you. If being city property, the certification committee is going to be needing something kind of light and light up the street department and watering, y'all, y'all talking about?
We talked about that Saturday a little bit, and then we talked about it a while ago.
Okay, well, if, you know, really to buy something else, a golf corn or whatever, could we, could we not use?
I don't mind. Just get whatever you need and just come here.
Just has to be a, like this, nature it with.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, to water those plants that would help alleviate some of the, with them on the schedule and due question.
Yeah, it's. Would there be a motion to approve this purchase?
They do have it in their budget. I'll second.
Any other discussion? On the favor say aye. Any others? Probably abstaining, they were, so. They're abstaining, two of those.
Rec's, was rec going to get to use it?
Rec's, rec's got, they already got one. Yes, they got one they use all the time. Mayor, you want it?
It's three.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Emily, Peter Stupson, where to come. We've been discussing about fire station. You know, back in October, we had to source all over, ask the BISBIRD higher than what we anticipated.
Yes.
So we're ready to look at a new plan and see what Ms. Emily has to offer.
There's actually two plans in this packet.
Okay, thank you.
I've gone back and revised it a couple of times and talked with engineers and several other people about it. So if you'll look in your packet, you've got two sets of stapled drawings. The first one that I want to talk to you about is the one that says fire station bay only. Here on the side, it's kind of the smaller plan of the two. This fire station is essentially just a bay. It has an electrical room, and it's called a gear room on there, but it's essentially going to be a, whatever you need it for, because you won't have any gear out there immediately, and one restroom. The restroom is, is a requirement. You have to have an electrical room just to house the electrical capabilities of the bays, the doors, any kind of electricity you might need. So we have to have, this is the bare absolute minimum that we can get away with. This is a two-truck bay. And we've gone from having any brick or concrete blocks in the building to completely being a metal building. If you'll look at the second page of that, you'll see the metal building, I did try to keep it somewhat with an aesthetic that doesn't make it look exactly like a metal building by just turning the metal sideways so that it, it looks a little bit better than just a metal building out there. Still has a regular roof on it, not having a pitched metal bay, metal roof on it. But this is about 1950s, like 1,950 square feet for this design. Again, it's the bare minimum. So these drawings are just a couple of different elevations, the front, the left, the back elevation, and the right elevation. And then if you'll turn to the last sheet in that packet, it shows a site plan. I'm not recommending, for both plans, I think we should do the same site plan regardless of which plan you decide to use. In this first plan here, you'll see two windows on the right-hand side of the base. Those windows, eventually, should you ever decide to increase the size of it to this larger plan, if that's what you choose to do, those windows would just, just come out, and you have the doors there for this second plan. So if you choose to build a smaller one, I would recommend keeping the site plan for the larger one so that you aren't having to go in and rip up asphalt, concrete, or anything else if you do decide to build the, the added on training room, break room area. So the site plan for both buildings is actually the same. It's so that you don't have to rework that and re-spend that money at a later time. The second plan, in that, in the second little packet, you have stapled together there, basically shows a revised plan of what we had back when we bid this in September, which goes back to having a gear room, a laundry room, an electrical room on the left side. And on the right side, we have a training room, a small break room, an office, and one restroom. It still takes away the two sleeping quarters that we had, the two shower units that we had, and the two offices that we had. It puts a small office back in. Also had two storage rooms that we took away and the generator room. So this is a significantly reduced size compared to the first one. The square footage of this one is about 2,950 square feet. The square footage of the one we designed back and bid was around 4,000 square feet. So this one's still quite a bit smaller than the one that we did bid. This is also a completely metal building, except for a couple of walls that would have to be stud walls that we would, would use. And you can see the elevations of it, what it would look like here. They're labeled front, left elevation. And these one, the ones that says larger one is identified as fire station with training room on the right-hand side of the drawing there. So I am trying to get a more definitive cost as to what the square footage, what this would be. It's hard to say, just because the bid market's a little bit volatile right now. It's, it's kind of a, it's an odd market right now because you can't, it depends on how many people are bidding it and who the actual owner actually is in terms of, of who, of what the prices are. That's unfortunate with the way it is right now. So time daily number is a little bit more tricky right now than I would have anticipated it being. But it would be an additional design fee cost since it's a different style of building. We can keep a fair amount of the electrical work the same. The plumbing, we can use a portion of the plumbing. We can use a portion of the mechanical, but in terms of the structure, it's a completely redesign on the structural side of the building. Architectural wise, I can use a lot of the same details that I used before, except for the wall details, really all different details. So there will be an additional design fee to redesign it using out of one of these. So I guess what I would like to have for me tonight is if you would, if, which one of these you would like for me to move forward with, so that we can start getting some real details out. I did have talking to a couple of contractors that I'm going to have give me a baseline kind of guideline price. It won't be a bid price, but it will give me a really good estimate. But they need more information on my side for me, details-wise, so that they can give me those costs. So if I kind of know which way y'all want to lean, then I can kind of get some more of that information. Do you may have any question? Yeah, the quicker I know something, the, a lot of this, I've already done a lot of the design work, just trying to lead into that, but the structural guy needs to know more than anything else. He is the one that's most impacted by the, the changes. But y'all are certainly welcome to look at, ask any questions. Like I said, the taller plan is bare minimum. It really is just two truck bays. That's considered a underestimating, rich portion of, storage building portion of the code. So it's not as code demanding, I guess is a good way to put that. When we add the other spaces, there do, costs do increase a little bit. Just maybe we have to have some.
This first plan you showed us here, it can be added on.
Yes. The, I, I recommend the site bay design for this add-on. And if you look at the larger plan, you'll see those two doors that come from the bay into that little hallway and into the break room. And those two doors are the locations of the windows. So we would basically design it so that structurally, we could just take those windows out, put the doors in, and then add on to the building. So it would be a separate building itself, but we would build in the, the addition, so to speak, to start with. So if you, when you do decide to man it, or if you, and the other option is, is that we can design it with the bare minimum and do an alternate for the training room, the break room, and the office. And what that would do is allow you to, to get a cost for that portion of it, and then you can decide whether you want to build that portion now. If you don't want to build it now, you can just have that as a planning number at a later point in time. It won't be the same because you're not going to, say, that portion comes in at, say, $100,000, whatever it is. That obviously is not a number you can stick to, but if you're planning a year from now, you'll know, well, we want to plan around $125,000, $150,000 to add that on to this building. So it's not going to be a, if you take it, the day it's bid, it'll be that cost. But if you decide later, it just becomes a planning number, so to speak, so that you can make plannings in the future for it. So either way.
One of these, they're a name out there?
Yeah.
Where's this going to be? In Bedford Park?
Yes, sir.
It has to be brick on the front.
Well, I've been out there. There are quite a few buildings that don't have a brick on the front. So I do need to.
But it was when it was put out there, it was put, the front had to be brick.
And we can certainly put brick on the front. It's not that big a deal. Structurally, it's a little different. But this one doesn't have, we met when we talked, I think, last time in a meeting about that. I wrote, there's a couple out there that didn't follow that, of course.
No, right after it was passed. I think the Duster Board didn't make them do it or something.
But, but we can put brick on it. That's not an issue, put brick on the front of it or not. If we did that, basically, if you're looking at the small plan or the large plan, the rate would go from here and wrap around to about that point. So that'd be, it would, it would be, it would still be a metal building. It would just have a brick near front.
Well, I love planning personally. I want the classroom to start with it, but if that's something that can be done later, I'm okay with that too. Definitely need more of the other for sure.
And you don't have any idea of what the difference?
I have someone that's willing to give me an estimate once I can give him some more plans, but I can't really move forward with any plans without knowing which one you would like to.
Will doing an add alternate affect the bid price any?
What that, if you do an add alternate, you get the base bid for, say, the small design.
Right.
That's going to be fine. And then we would, they would give you a cost for that other one. And you have essentially six years to decide whether you're going to take that cost, if you're going to decide to add it then or not.
Right. I just wondered if that would affect the cost or the bid?
Um.
If you just bid without doing the add alternate?
It depends. It, it, it's hard to say whether it will or not. Some of the issues with that just come down to the fact that there are bonding capacities for people. You know, some people that may have a bigger bond capacity wouldn't have a problem with that alternate. But if there's someone that's a, a smaller contractor that might have a problem with the big capacity, then it would affect that. So it's hard to say, given that you do have a larger number of small contractors around here. That is one of the influences we have on the bids at the moment.
Can we think it'd be somewhere between $100, $125 square foot?
Yes. I, I think that's a good target number. I think both of these would fit in your budget that you have right now. But then again, it's hard for me to say. But it is a metal building. And the only real difference is that you're going to have structural steel. We can have a lot of structural steel framing in the last design. We had structural steel roofing, but we didn't have it in the framing. So that's your biggest, that'll be your biggest ticket item, will be the actual structural framing.
How wide are those bays there?
They are. 16 through, I think. I believe that's for, maybe 14.
14.
14, I believe.
14.
Yes.
14.
You go in either front or back?
Yeah, it loops around. The, if you look at the site plan on either one of them, it doesn't really matter which one you look at. But they're designed to, the trucks will come in on this side and loop around and come through the building. But you can drive them from the front to the back, but generally, you bring them from the back to the front, so you can just pull straight out.
All the parking be included in that bid?
Yeah, and the actual number of parking spaces would be designed to fit the larger of the two designs so that you're not having to add parking spaces to the building once you, if you do decide to add another. Basically building the site for the larger building with either design.
We need to go with the small and do the add up.
I think doing that off is the way to go. That way, we can, once the bids come in, we can, you know, if, if that alternate comes in way higher, then we can just drop back down with the other to give them the, the better. I want the option. Yeah.
And it's not a problem to that alternate. There are some people that don't like to bid them, but it's not an unusual occurrence. So.
You could get higher bids that way. I mean.
No, they're not higher. It's just you may lose a potential bidder that doesn't want to bid it that way, but you. And it does allow a lot, there are several metal building contractors in the area. So I think that it gives probably more people a chance to bid it than we did in the traditional building that we had before. So.
We need to make sure they have a work on, insurance to.
Yeah, that's written in the specifications, our front-end specifications that we had last time. We had the.
Because of our, the cost of this, if we don't, we'll, 30% probably.
You ever want to bid, it has to have bonded license insurance.
Right.
So we'll do.
Yes.
Well, we need a motion to do it and just get to, go with the smaller plan with the bill. Is that what we need to do?
I, I, I just need to, it's the way you want to go. And I'll proceed with the design work. And I'll bring it back to you before you have to put it out there anyway, because you have to.
It'll take a few weeks to do that one?
Yeah, I'll get back with my engineers and see what their timeline is.
We really need to get this thing going.
The structural engineer's our biggest one. He generally is pretty quick. So I think we'll get it out there pretty quick.
I'll put in a motion just to give, go ahead and go ahead and just get them. I know we ain't got to process anybody. Is that right?
We can make a motion to go ahead and give permission to start this process.
Would there be a motion to go ahead and give Amy permission to start the process? Would we discuss with the bid alter?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
On the favor say aye. Thank you. Appreciate you. Appreciate all the work you did. Number six is discussed, moved some money from our city general fund account, which is, is in mostly one account, I think, since the first national, which apparently draws interest rate of 0.1%. The First State Bank has offered paying 0.5% if we deposit 500,000 or greater. I think this is a good deal for us. Draws more interest, a lot more interest actually. And other cities, they're just doing this just for cities, offer, offer this package, this interest. And it's still being general fund, but as far as the city cat goes, it just, it just has some, one bank, some, but it's a good, good move for us. As we do this draw, and also shares, shared banking in town. We do have some banking in the first state. We don't have that much.
We was talking about 500,000.
And we have like, those $3 million in general fund.
I make a motion.
Can we, can we go with these?
And if they like, kind of treat it like a savings account more, and we don't ever.
And you come down that far or? Put in, take, so check the council. Yeah, it pays more. I mean, CDs don't pay that much. At least this way, if you need access, you got access.
it, you got access. You got access to it anytime.
Whatever the council wants to do, because the minimum was five hundred, that's reasonable.
We're going to go with five hundred thousand, okay?
Whatever you want.
I'll second.
I'll second. I'll make a motion to, to put them in.
You got to back up. You said five hundred. Can you?
Yeah, we saw your five hundred. So, so I didn't know if we could go with five hundred.
It says five, what's your greater? You got a million.
Make a motion, please.
Yes.
Our Lent made a motion, um, because it is five hundred thousand or greater. The Lent made a motion to, uh, one million dollars, first state bank, and temps.
Well, I made a motion that we are moving from first national, first state, of one million dollars.
All right, Francis made a motion.
All right, I'll second.
What do you?
It's all, we'll work out this.
Check in account or?
Check in.
Rachel, check in account. Problem solved. You got a discussion?
I'll prefer to say.
Number seven's recognition. When we, when Roger was here a couple weeks ago, he's out this evening, talked about closing these wells. I think it's something they can go ahead and do, these wells closed for the safety. They've been this way for many years, but still they need to be, that we have closed properly. People want to go ahead and get this done. The council's willing to do it. I think it's a good thing.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and do it while you're not, we can talk about it in the past, so.
Total cost is thirty-two thousand.
Thirty-two thousand.
Thirty-two thousand, no two.
What about the building?
We're going to start, we'll get those wells planned, we'll clean those buildings up, uh, get all the debris off of them. There's a couple that actually needs to be tore down after, after the wells gets closed, which is a bad check. So we need to clean the property up. And Mike's guys, something that needs to be cleaned up, tore down, we got to, we can do that ourselves.
Those homes, those buildings that remain there, are they lost? I mean, no one could have access.
Most of them don't have, they weren't on, uh, buying them.
Didn't want that door? Well, if that's the case, then they ought to be torn down, they could be used for. But, we are the type of thing to tell.
I'll second. Brent's made a motion, Lent's second. Is there any other discussion on that? I'll prefer to say. Number eight, uh, just give a break, because we think I didn't get back with us on the software. We have to, you know, we talked about it a couple weeks ago on the, the other software, the city center, the headquarters. I think they have something, but I'm not sure it's exactly what, what we looked at before. Uh, we definitely need one or the other. Uh, this will help us in our city cemetery, it's going to swing by a lot, knowing where they're at, knowing what's available, uh, somewhat simpler than what we've got right now. But we will try to have that next week. They were supposed to get back with us today and they didn't do it, so that's the reason, kind of, I prefer to skip. Uh, number nine, is a recommendation to approve Shuttles Electric to install the red light equipment at the main red light, First Avenue. And, well, the main red light and the one to First Avenue. Uh, the total cost is twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars, and the fund can come from the Gasoline Tax Fund. Uh, we know that several months ago, or a few months ago, the state has given the city all of the red light equipment, uh, wiring, everything needs to be done to get those two red lights redone. Only thing we have to do is furnish the labor. And, uh, call another company that does labor for the state, and they did not want to bid, so there's only one company left to do it, and that's Shuttles Electric. Uh, and that's who the state uses, the Shuttles, and the company called Saint, I bring it out, Saint did not want to bid it. But, uh, this is something that needs to be done. And then we can get those lights in sync with each other going north, especially going north and south, on the main light and the one to First Avenue. But, uh, we need our recommendation to get this done, let them do it. And the state's already prepared and provided all the materials. This is just a delay.
This comes under the Gasoline Tax Department. I'm not sure I should, I'm not sure I should run an income statement here, but, um, it's self, and the last one, uh, okay, so, good show.
It's our bill. Motion to do this.
One more motion, if we can go ahead with it. Well, thank you.
Second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? I'll prefer to say. Uh, number ten, a recommendation to approve purchase of a twenty-six forty-five, three-cylinder cabota diesel engine, sixteen-inch ProMarshall mower from Scotty Ford Company, uh, latest in Russell, for eleven thousand two hundred and ninety-four dollars. For the strip, on Mike, you went, I'll let you address this. I know you went, got several enterprises. This is actually the same mower that Scotty Ford is cheaper than this same mower on the state bid price. So you found the state bid price, and then some of them's actually cheaper, the same as that mower price. And I, I kind of need this mower. I mean, you got...
We do. We've added in, uh, some more properties. Actually, we, last year, we started mowing more than, than the previous year. Uh, and we'd like to expand it a little bit further, maybe go further north on forty-three, maybe up to the bridge at just past five Chevelle Lake. We need to start, uh, my opinion, we need to start mowing the right ways to the Bedford Industrial Park, and the park now, on the river road. Right now, we're bush hogging them. Uh, I think it looks better if we could use finish more, and such as this right here. Uh, I contacted, uh, four different companies. I got on the state bid list, and Capital Tractor in Montgomery, uh, we've got the state bid price at eleven thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars. Tupelo was a little bit higher than that. And, um, Farley Cabota Place over, I guess that's in Jasper, that, uh, was even a little bit higher, even higher. So then I contacted Scott Equipment. I purchased the, there was over, and he actually, lower than the state bid, approximately six hundred and something dollars. Their goal is to take in more property as far as mowing, and, and cut down the market, push hoggy, and also create another plan, possibly to have do more street and fair, right-of-way clearing and that kind of stuff. So I appreciate you all's consideration.
I'll have a problem with mowing season fixing it pretty busy.
Yeah, we're, of course, we've got, you, you see how?
It looks great. You did a good job down there. All those landowners are falling and...
This pile will, um, we can buy an attachment to this mower to pick up leaves and stuff, so it should help us as far as picking up leaves, uh, at the new city hall and, and the city cemetery.
Mike, did y'all run both mowers at cemetery, too? Would that, I mean, that go down with you?
Yes. That's, that's my goal, is to run two mowers instead of one. Uh, actually, the mower we've got now is about five years old, I guess. It's got about eight thousand, a little bit more hours on it. Probably another season or two on that mower is, is going to be getting pretty worse. So.
What size deck's on it?
This one's got a sixty. I've ran these mowers for years. They're good mowers, uh, real dependable. Of course, it's got a three-cylinder diesel engine on them. Can get a lot more hours on them, best fuel consumption. Uh, the deck and everything's hydraulic on it, that, that they're, my opinion, the best mower on the market, with money.
I'll make a motion to the purchase. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? I'll prefer to say. Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Thank you for all the, about all the things, Mike, for some of the guys' work. And like around Friday, but then we had a few guys come down Saturday, including Mike, and, uh, several, a few volunteered, several city workers. Uh, I was there, Liam was there, and several, several others there, Keith and Chad was there. We had a few more agents that was there, Andrew. Had a good crowd and, uh, good, nice work. Got a lot accomplished. Almost is, is complete. So they're ready to open. But, uh, thanks to Mike's and these guys, they wouldn't come down on Saturday and never do that. Some of the red, I thought, parts there.
Did you hear a big tree?
I think he had several trees.
Oh, good work. I had to go throw me in there. But I got several trees there.
And they did a lot of good work, too, uh, before everybody got there, with some excavating and stuff for us, which kept a part of it. I'm sure they appreciate that. They do a nice thing. Before we get to number eleven, man, for his executive session, that Scott, which hopefully there is in the firm this year, and then, uh, wanted to make an announcement that Airbag will be here at the city hall on Wednesday, April sixth, uh, from ten to one. That's discounted Wednesday. I think they might have sent some stuff out in the mail, I saw something, they'll very soon. Just by the way, if they, if somebody wants to get the, the full package, you know, the city should enter in contact with Airbag, and for thirty-five dollars, fully, full coverage, which will be anywhere that I have Airbag. It's not all the nation, it's anywhere that I have Airbag, which is why we, so, and, like, if one of us wants to, wants to come Wednesday, uh, from ten to one, they'll be here at the city hall to sign up new, uh, potential customers if they want to do that. And also I wanted to thank, uh, McDonald's. They fed all the guys in the house Friday and Saturday. Mr. Bird, breakfast and what's, and I certainly want to thank Mr. Bird, uh, for doing that.
How much do they like on the playground? I know y'all, y'all could have used a little more help the whisper out, but, uh, y'all were making do, but what, how much is left to be done?
Uh, there's going to be a retaining walk across the back and down, I think, inside. There'll be some sidewalks in the front, eighty-eight parking. All the mulch has got to be installed. Uh, several other things, but most of the main equipment is put up Saturday.
That's what I said, the main equipment is, is just a little left to do that, man?
Yes, yes.
And how's that going to be done? Is that just to the workers?
Two or three, well, no. We've got, this is going to be done. Any favoring, I think, whole apartment, some's going to be doing that. But it's going to be done over the next couple of weeks, the back wall and everything.
Okay.
So it's, it's coming along.
So y'all looking about when to complete that?
I'm not sure. I have to ask, hang on a minute, see. Pretty soon. I mean, you know, they're, they can move mulch in some this week, next couple of days, the weather holds up. So some are, maybe some of that, but can be used as we're going, doing the rest. Hopefully, because a lot of folks are driving by, medical, and the weather's starting to use more, and it's just about ready for an outlaw, it's real close. Okay. We may need to go into executive session just a little bit, talk about this next, this hosting the corporate director's position. Uh, so I do need to go into executive session, just for the outside economic development. I need to talk about the next, sir.
I'd like to ask Mike, before we go into executive session. Uh, I ride around with some on my lunch breaks, when it's raining, what have you. We got a lot of our roads is ditch.
It's what?
Is the ditch. All the water's running down our roads. The sides of highways are higher. The water's not getting in the ditches.
I agree.
It looks, you know, we need to take the motor grader or something, clip those off, make some rabbit ear or something, let that water get in those ditches and clean out the ditches, because I know around the east side, around David Hall, that's the street over there on up Harmony, Grandview, and back out towards west, and they some, uh, out that way. Uh, but the water just runs down the highway, it can't get to the ditches to, to, to get off. There's holding water and what have you. And also, Mayor, this, we've talked about it, but there hasn't been moved, this fireworks trailer down here. It's sitting there, sitting there, sitting, people, you know? Can't put them just anywhere, but we allow them to come right in from downtown and let it stay there for two or three years.
It's been there eight years?
No, it goes in and out. It's stayed there for a while, but I mean, I mean, that's not right. People can't put them everywhere, and, and we allow them to just come right in down here in the middle of town. You think it's supposed to be?
That was a big controversy last demonstration regarding that, that.
It's not, it's been very longer than, I mean, it's very prior to us being there. It's not been moved, but it's been there, you know, it's not been moved for several years. It ain't something just happened.
Well, it's been, I don't think you're certain where to go. They pull that, you pull it in and out.
I'd check on it, though.
You know, that's right there in front of that. Registered people coming from out of town in here to eat, and it's...
It looks bad. It's bad looking.
Which, which location?
Science Valley.
Oh, but Science Valley, yeah, Science Valley.
Tim, could I respond to your comment about the, the street? Yeah. Over the winter time, we've had a lot of damage. We've, we've had, we've probably had to replace fifteen or twenty covers that got washed down here in the hood. We've had to grade, correct, fix people driveways the sides of the roads. I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but the city has three hundred and ninety city streets, three hundred and ninety. Not counting some county roads that we helped maintain. We got twenty-five hundred garbage stops a week. We got six people on the garbage truck. We got twelve people total employed. One of those is a mechanic, and the other one, uh, runs a brush truck. That leaves me three people to take care of all this. And we work as hard as we can to get it done, but we just, you know, we can only do so much with so many people.
I understand.
You're about too short, aren't you?
About too short from where it has, more than that from where it has been.
Yeah, that's true.
And that was one of my reasons for wanting to buy a new mower, is to free up more people to do road type work.
Uh, we, we need it, because it's, it's dangerous, because somebody's going to hit the water pockets, especially with rain. Uh, Grandview's one of the worst, but that, out there east of town, like I said, one out west of them. But I understand where to talk.
Yeah, there's one out there on Harmony. We're actually waiting on a contractor to go up and fix his driveway that washes down across the street and fills that, or fills that whole ditch up. And until he does that, we're just backing up, because when we grade it again...
Yeah, he understands that it's not going to be done, fixed right, because all our construction gets through there. He understands.
And I've talked, I've talked to both of them, and hope, hopefully they both understand that.
Yeah, he understands. But, but, yeah, we do need to clip the sides of those up, um, to try and get some of that water in the ditch. Also, Mayor, this is, this is the beginning of the four years. We still ain't got our welcome house set.
I've got a price on the letters from, uh, from Mike. It was...
It's supposed to be nine hundred dollars.
Very high.
Huh?
It was, I can't remember. It wasn't found many years ago.
We'll get them. We'll get them.
Well, you were waiting on the east, till that road got beefed, and then you were going to do the wrong one, you know?
Yeah, they need to be on there.
It's been five years.
You build, you build something, you don't just take here, sir.
The one on forty-three, that we were talking about. And what about the sign up here, the walking track? Will it get that tore down?
Going to.
Because it's just hanging in its pit.
Talking about the one that, uh, that, what, built a mower, John?
Oh, yeah.
By the edge of the road, it's about to fall down. Anybody just, you can tell the road.
The, the hearing next Monday?
Uh, the hearing next Monday for, um, development opportunity for Jim Michael Burden Action Partners to be at six o'clock next Monday. All right. Next item will be then, you're in executive session. Next item on the agenda, Scott, what we need to do first?
Accept the retirement package of Superintendent Greg Superintendent Armstrong.
Okay, how we need to word that? What's the motion need to be?
Basically, a, a motion to accept the retirement of Larry Armstrong as Superintendent of the Recreation Department, per the terms, which was, that Mr. Armstrong was going to take his remaining sick time and vacation time. His last days would be occurring on April fourteenth, and after April fourteenth, he would be using all of his remaining time. That would be over and above the max of four eighty in the current personnel policy.
Okay.
Now, he said over and above what's in the personnel policy, correct?
The current personnel policy, that's correct.
All right, now who, why, why aren't we making this deal? Mayor, did you make this deal?
Scott and I did.
I don't think we can go against the handbook, and I told you that.
Is it within, uh, the authority of the mayor's office?
It's, it's within the authority, um, and the way that the document was drafted, and the language in the document, uh, is basically to avoid litigation, uh, down the road. That's how we worded the part that was over and above the four eighty that's in the current cap. Um, Mr. Armstrong argues that, from the time that he was hired, that the policy of the city was to get all of the sick time, once you get that retirement age, and, you know, he's been at that, that point for about fourteen, fifteen years, and, um.
He said the whole time, that's what he was told when he was hired, he would get it all, and that's what he was determined to get, if he retired, he wanted it all, because that's what he was led believe he would get from the very beginning. He never, never wavered off of that, ever.
Is this setting a precedent, like, somebody that doesn't have their twenty-five years in? This doesn't necessarily set a precedent that, that you do them the same way, right?
Right, you have to have your, your years in, first of all, before this is even a discussion.
Well, when they get twenty-five years in, they'll be able to just like he is.
That, yeah, once you get your, once you get your years in, then that opens the discussion up.
Man just got one year, and he worked twenty-four more years, or twenty-five, he's able to get the same thing, Mr. Armstrong is correct.
He could make that argument. I, I would argue if he came in under the new personnel policy, that it would be a, a separate situation, um, but I know we do have employees that do fall under the same position as Mr. Armstrong. I do not know their position and what they're claiming, but that's logical to think that they're gonna have a very similar position.
Well, they could be claiming the same thing. I mean, for all, for all we know.
And they, and they will now that it's out, no?
He was hired, was it under E.T.?
I'm sure.
Thirty-nine years ago.
Which, which the personnel policy then would, had been quite different, sort of the hiring practices might have been more informal back then?
I would imagine there would be a lot.
Yes, very, I would think.
If they made a deal back then.
And the state's policy has about double the time to, about retirement to.
Well, in my opinion, I mean, Larry was gonna do this, whether it's tonight, or whether it's ten years down the road, I mean, he, he's still gonna be.
Exactly, right.
You know, he's building up more days. I, I'm, I'm ready to get rid of him, I, I make a motion that we go ahead and accept this.
Okay.
But Mayor, why, why won't we involve and then seen the package? We ain't even seen the package.
We was talking about last time, when you were not here.
Huh? I can't help that.
Well, we can't.
Well, we can't either.
That's just like, that's just like he called me for next Monday night, I had a doctor's appointment tonight, today in Birmingham, but I canceled it to be here, and he said another meeting for next Monday night without him asking anybody. This right here is wrong, and y'all know it's wrong.
We got a motion on table, is there a second?
Okay, Mayor, you gonna get your lawsuit on this.
We got a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye? Any opposed?
No.
Put me down, yes.
Put you down, yes?
Yes.
I make a motion with you.
Well, we got a post Larry's job.
I make a motion with post Larry's job.
Is there a motion to post Department Rec, Rec.
You don't know who you want?
Second.
No, I have no idea. Greg, made a motion to Lynn, second, to post Representative's position?
We're gonna post it within the city first, before you put it out.
Well, they're all, they're all can.
What's qualification?
But last time, that didn't happen. Last time, when I asked that it be posted within the city, when I went around, some of the men, I said, y'all know about this job? Nope, nobody told us about it. So is it actually gonna be written and posted like it's supposed to be?
Yeah, we gave it to all the supervisors. This job.
The, uh, the one at the rec center?
This last hiring?
Yeah, and the mechanic.
They all got it.
Absolutely. Every supervisor got a copy to give his hand.
Jeremy's gonna apply for it.
So, well, on what they said.
Because I delivered them, every department got one.
Absolutely.
They didn't put it up. I carried them up.
Oh, oh, I mean, they may not have been put up.
They'd go, see, these city guys is trying to stir a bunch of crap, that's what it is.
Exactly.
I mean, they ain't going nowhere.
No, they're not going anywhere.
Because I make sure I take them.
Hang on a second, we got a vote on post, all in favor, say aye on posting?
Uh, uh. But Mayor, I think you need to let it come out in public here, don't get behind closed doors, and see if you've got enough votes before you bring it up here, and that's what you done.
Listen, no, I did not, no, I did not.
Yeah, you did.
Absolutely not.
You did, you said it in there, Wade, you said, I'm not going out there if I ain't got the post. Now, you said that, and Francis knows you said, the rest of you don't say.
We don't, we didn't have to do this.
Okay.
We.
I didn't hear you say that.
Yes, you did.
Nobody said yea or nay, if he did. Everybody knows how I felt, I mean, it's been in the same paper twice, how did I get it?
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion.
Second.
Which one, second, Tim? Francis made a motion. Vote.